I'm gonna call this meeting of the Mount Airy Planning Commission for October twenty-sixth to order. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is approval of the minutes. Everybody have a chance to take a look at the edited minutes? The chair would entertain a motion to approve them.
Motion, okay.
I move motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Alright, motion made by Patty, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded.
We're gonna be doing this all night.
I love it, I love it, you can just trade off.
Okay, yeah, next time.
Every other one.
All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, like sign, and it's unanimous. Let me see, let me borrow your pen, a second. Go ahead and do a John Henry on this. And we'll go ahead and move into our citizen comment section. If everyone has a copy of the agenda for tonight, if there's any other topics that anyone would like to come up to the podium and address, then we would encourage you to do so now. Do give your name and your residential address, but anything other than what we'll be covering on our agenda, please feel free to come up and share with us. Anybody? Okay. Going up, good.
Michael O'Brien, Park Avenue. Can you vote on anything legally?
Yes.
Can you approve minutes legally?
Yes.
Without a quorum?
Yes.
Yes. I made a call to the mayor to double check, how do we proceed in the absence of what we normally think of as a quorum? And he says unless there are controversial issues, you absolutely can. What we are able to do though is to say, if anyone wants to challenge a vote, there is a period of time where that's allowed and that's acceptable, okay?
How many am I, do you guys know?
No, we don't have that many, we actually need four. We need four at the table. As I said, you, it's, you have an odd number, so yes, you could pass something, but it could be challenged. That's the caveat when you have less. Well, that's town code, per the town attorney, so. Well, we'll give you a copy of the code and you can check it out. And you can also talk to the town attorney. Yep, well, I asked the mayor if we had had this situation before and how it was handled and what was the precedent, and that's what he shared with me, so, that's why I'm comfortable with it. Then we'll go to our county planners. Andrea? Don't have anything to report at all? Well, there's interesting things going on in Carroll County and Mount Airy's involved in it, but, okay.
You don't have any discussion about that?
Alright. Okay.
Nice to see you.
Then, Tim, any update from Frederick County?
Well, actually I don't have any, well, I have one update and one question and something to hand out to you, so I do have some things. Good evening, planning commission members. This is a document that's, it's called Homegrown Frederick and it profiles many, many farms in the county that offer like pick-your-own or other, you know, meat things you can get, farm-to-table things, and it describes just the whole, the whole industry of agriculture. It's a very, very good document, so I'd like to hand them out to you tonight. They update it every year, it's from our Office of Economic Development and our planning office. It's a lot of good stuff, well-produced, good production. I guess the other thing is, well, a question, has the town considered writing a letter to the county about, you know, since you've updated your master plan?
We've done that.
Oh, you have, okay, I haven't seen the letter or gotten wind of anything, so I'm here to ask you directly. Can you tell me when you sent it? Maybe that's a bad revelation of communication in my office, but.
We sent it to your new head guy, who came over from Carroll County, okay? And he acknowledged it, he wrote us back and I've even responded to that. And he said, and he took the occasion to say that Frederick is about to embark upon an update of your master plan, your comprehensive plan.
Right, we are.
And as part of, and they look to do that within the next six months to get it started. They're hoping it'll take no more than roughly a couple of years, of course, we said that at first too. It took more like four. But he said incorporating our changes per our update would be part of that process.
Part of the countywide update, okay.
So he acknowledged that indeed, that would come to pass.
Alright, so wouldn't, it would not be a separate community plan update to, you know, look at your, what you have done? It's gonna be wrapped into the whole, okay, it's good to know. The other thing I'll mention is the, and Carroll County is part of this also, the Monocacy River, it's one of nine state-designated scenic rivers we have, and every scenic river has a management plan primarily written by DNR. Every scenic river has an advisory board or body, and the Monocacy Scenic River Board is made up of five people from Frederick and five people from Carroll. And we're underway with an update to our river management plan that was written back in nineteen ninety, so it's very, very old, in dire need of an update and revision, so we're working hard on that. Even though you're obviously in the watershed of the Monocacy River, you're, you know, a little bit removed from the main stem, the river plan, it's gonna have a little bit more focus on the river corridor, but certainly there'll be lots of data and description and other recommendations about the entire watershed, but I just wanted to alert you to that, and we'll certainly give you a copy of the draft plan. We'll probably have to have, well, we will have a public participation component, either like an open house or even a public hearing to receive comments on the draft plan. We're hoping to have the plan released sometime in the winter. We're doing all the layout and production in-house, a lot of assistance we're getting from a lot of different entities, other government agencies and other, you know, professional acquaintances and other, other people. So, we're well underway with that, and Carroll's working with us too, obviously. Even though they have a small part of the rivers up in their northern, in the northern, northeast part of the rivers, the dividing line between Carroll and Frederick.
Frederick City and Frederick County have been active in terms of the sustainability movement, you know, for a good while, and I've noticed mention and discussion by our water and, not our water and sewer, our recycling and sanitation commission of an interest in shifting their focus and their positioning in that direction as well. That could be an opportunity for some mentoring and some, you know, some sharing of information and insight.
Sure, those members or your staff could come to our Sustainability Commission meetings, or I could get you in touch, whoever wants to get in touch with the staff people in the county that run that commission. Could do that if you'd like.
There was also a very interesting article in the Frederick News Post this week about development impact fees and a concern over how the cost of school construction has ramped up with some of the additional, I guess they are state requirements. It's adding fifteen, twenty percent and more to already fairly substantial construction costs. And so there's, there's a proposal that the county executive.
To raise some of those, right.
Is submitting for consideration of that, and so that's also very, very interesting.
Okay, that's all I have, any other questions?
Andrea has a question, I think, something. Okay, so mid-October, October fifteenth, Lisa is telling us. Yep. Was that when we sent ours to?
That was acknowledging the letter from him, that one, that short one.
That was the second one, we'd already gotten his acceptance to our letter. Okay. Oh, in the first half of the month?
I was just gonna say that for the Monocacy River, we, as far as our planning office goes, our planning office used to be a very large, multiple department. We now are just the planning department now, so we, as far as the planning department goes, we don't, we no longer participate in the Monocacy River Board, but the other half of us, that was around on our, the other part of the department, does. So I just wanna let you know why I don't have anything to say about it, so, that's all.
The Carroll County staff liaison, like myself to the River Board, is Byron Madigan. He works in the Water Resources Department, not in the planning office. But we did meet with, I met with him and then Tom Devilbiss and Planning Director Phil Hager in the summer about the Carroll County's involvement, because we definitely need them to be part of this too. And he fully agreed that in September, we met, the Carroll County staff and myself met with the commissioners to introduce the river plan and kinda ask their formal okay or green light for the county to participate with us, with Frederick in the update, and they agreed.
About two weeks ago, I attended a luncheon that was hosted by the Frederick County Realtors Association, and Jim Google, your planning director, made a presentation. It was very, very interesting, he laid out projections for Frederick County's growth the next twenty years. And the largest share of it, two-thirds to three-fourths of it, is in the county portion as opposed to the city. And the majority of that is in that southeastern quadrant over there, between two-seventy and seventy. Okay, so it's adjacent, it's adjacent to us, I mean, that comes as no surprise, we've seen the approvals and so forth. He also had a lot of interesting things to say about the demographics of that growth. The majority of it is gonna be millennials. The majority of it is gonna be younger individuals, which is who you see now, to a large extent, when you go downtown Frederick. And it's part of the vibe of the city. It was interesting to see the increase in population, but a much more modest increase in local jobs. And I don't know if that suggests, you know, the continued commuter lifestyle that we tend to have in this area, which would be more impact on major highways and roads and so forth, which is.
I think more, you know, more land has been zoned and planned for residential development as opposed to employment and industry.
Yes, which is something obviously we're trying to take in the other direction, but yes, okay, very, very good.
Thank you.
Anything else for Tim?
No.
Okay, thanks, Tim, appreciate it. And Tim, we hope, at least shortly, this is a busy, busy time of the year for county planners and for local municipal planners, but we would hope shortly after the beginning of the year, we can, we can do that beginning dialogue that we've reached out, yes. Yeah, that's the hope at this point.
Well, and Tony Shamelik is gonna be here, I guess it's the next Monday. Yeah, Tony Shamelik will be here next Monday at six-thirty to try to do, you know, a town hall very similar to what he's been doing in Urbana, for about a half an hour to see if there's any of his district two constituents that would like to have something to say, so, you know, we're trying to. We're trying to get some kind of dialogue going with everybody out there.
There's a couple of ordinances that, so there'll be a public comment period ahead of the regular council meeting, okay? Alright, let's move into sign permit, site plans and so forth. The first being Mount Airy Eye Care. Okay, and I think Barney and Rachel, you guys are gonna take the lead on this for us?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
So in regards to fifteen oh seven South Main Street, Mount Airy Eye Care, due to some requirements from, in the construction drawing phase, Mount Airy Eye Care had to make a few changes to the building as noted in the report. And also I wanted to point out, there's some, as noted in the report, there's some time crunch on this. But to discuss the changes for the north elevation, there was, where do we, on the north elevation here? There was a removal of the continuation of the swoosh that was gonna, it was gonna come down like this and the swoosh off. You can see it on the original site plan elevation. And then on the sec, you know, it was, that was taken off due to.
Yeah, I see.
Due to project cost that was removed. On the south elevation, you have up here.
Rachel, I gotta ask you first.
Sure.
What you, what is referred to as the north elevation on these plans, I've always thought that was facing west.
No, this is, this is actually facing north.
It is.
So Main Street runs.
Amazing, I've been turned around.
On the side of it.
Ninety degrees the whole time.
Yeah, Main Street like runs this way, past there. This actually faces the gas station, the gas and though.
Right.
Yeah. Alright, and then, so the south elevation, we got up here, there was an addition, they had to add a crawl space door, which is kinda like a four-foot half-door, and that was in order to comply with the Fire and Marshal comments during the permit process approval and the construction plan review phase. Modifications to the proposed development projects were deemed necessary to allow the project to move forward. As a result, the basement level of the building was eliminated and was modified to a crawl space for mechanical equipment only. The elimination of the basement did not change the overall site layout or drastically modify architectural elevations of the building, except for the need to install the crawl space door. So these, originally we're gonna have a door with steps going down, but they needed.
So no basement, but a crawl space?
Yeah, and there's the little four-foot door on the backside there.
Okay, oh, I see it, okay.
Okay, and then on the east elevation, as you can see up there in the upper left-hand corner, now that's the side, just for point of reference, that's the side that faces the veterinarian office behind them.
Right.
Originally, there was supposed to be six windows on the top and six windows on the bottom, but the three on the left there were removed and.
Those are examination rooms too.
Yeah, behind their examination room, so they, you know, didn't, you gotta be able to not have light coming in, so those were removed. So, the staff recommends approval of the architectural amendment, says follows, subject to final town and county agency comments. Number one, elimination of the architectural swoosh on the north elevation. Number two, addition of the crawl space door on the south elevation. And number three, elimination of three ground floor windows on the south side of the east elevation. And if you, if you have any questions, I can try to help.
Okay. It seemed to me when I was reading this and looking over the plans that there wasn't anything of substance in the changes, it was, it was primarily cost control. From a functionality standpoint, there wasn't any, any loss of functionality. From an engineering standpoint, do y'all have any concerns with?
No, we haven't, we don't see a problem with it.
I don't have any issues at all.
And just if there's any, any, those changes that were made, you don't even really see them from Main Street as you're going by, if that was a question.
Well, that's true, yeah, the more substantial changes are actually masked, okay? Alright, then I would say let's move to approve the staff recommendation.
I would, I would make that motion.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made to accept the staff recommendation, which includes elimination of the architectural swoosh on the north elevation, addition of the crawl space door on the south elevation, elimination of three ground floor windows on the south side of the east elevation. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. So tentatively then, that's an approval. Do y'all know what, what construction deadline they're pushing to try to meet?
I think they're trying to get done this week. I believe it's this, I don't know the exact dates, I know I'll be going out for finals this week.
Are they hoping to be functional by the beginning of the year?
I believe they're hoping to be functional next month.
Oh, wow.
But I'm not sure of the exact date, but yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I had just gone to the office and I know they said something about November, so it is now, they've pushed it a little bit, but they're hoping to get it in November.
Great, and we wish them the best. It's a nice addition in that area. And I like the roofline, it echoes the library and the contemporary design of that.
Yeah, I do have one question, this isn't regarding, it's regarding the building, but not necessarily what we just voted on. Two issues, parking and making that left-hand turn, is that going to be addressed at all? I mean, parking, I'd assume the parking is adequate, we voted it, okay, so we're good. And now, as far as making the left-hand turn, is that going to be permissible?
It is, yeah. They have two lanes of traffic to cross coming from the left, but we did do a study and actually looked up what the site distance was, because it hears how, how much sooner we're gonna see them come around the bend, but the site distance does meet our requirement. Didn't see any problem from the site distance.
The hedges and so forth that are down in front of the strip mall have actually been cut back. They were a lot deeper, they were a lot taller, they were more of an impediment.
Plus there was a couple of big trees out there that were also part of the site issues.
Alright, the second item in this section is Lot Eight, Section Four of Twin Arch Business Park. You got some amended architectural elevations there.
Okay.
Okay.
Ron, I'm gonna address, address the staff report and then if there's any questions or further things, I'm gonna give it to Ron Thompson to answer, he's the engineer of record.
Right, good.
Okay, so, you can read in here, during a recent progress inspection, the town site inspector noticed a disparity between the materials being used and the construction of the building and those reflected on the approved architectural elevations in the approved final site plan package. As you can see, there's two sets of the, they have the original and then the latest changes, the revised changes in your packet there. But overall, basically, the, originally they were gonna go, they were doing a partial brick, partial metal building, and they've decided that they've upgraded and are gonna do an all-brick building. And the colors, the colors are, are like a light red type, break, you can see the. Can you put the pictures on there to, I have some pictures, it's. I thought you had some.
Don't have very much room up to send.
I don't know if you can see it, it's still, it's kind of, you can see, you're getting that, get to the, of the, pretty of the brick. What?
Well, it's probably maybe back there.
Get an idea of the, the brick coloring and it's a nicer brick.
Does that blend in and complement other buildings that are in the area?
I do believe so, we have some pictures of some other buildings that are there. Some of the other buildings on the same road have the half brick or partial brick and partial metal, but they, these ones are gonna be all brick. For a frame of reference, it's to the left of Skyview Gymnastics is where Lot Eight is. And so that's there, and then the Providential Building you said, that's across the street, a little ways. And B G D Building, there is there, you see an idea, it's complimentary to what's out there. The noted changes from the original to the revised are listed out there. I'm just gonna read, I'll read the staff recommendation and then if there's any questions, I can refer to Ron. Staff recommends approval of the amended architectural upgrades for Lot Eight, Twin Arch Business Park, Section Four, subject to final town and county agency comments, with the condition that the following note be deleted from the revised drawing dated ten sixteen fifteen and remission, and re-submitted to the town. And the note reads, it's that little note in the right-hand corner of the, the bottom right-hand corner of the, of the plans, it says note, "Building elevations illustrated architectural features and are not construction drawings. See attached building design document for building construction, architectural details and specifications." They're asking for that to be removed.
Alright.
And I s, I guess if there's any questions, Ron can.
Ron, did you have any comments or wanna add any annotation?
No, the owner has just quite simply decided that for energy purposes to go with an all split-block masonry building as opposed to an metal building and recently picked the colors, which is why it's taken some time to come back. One of the few buildings out there that'll be all split-block, but.
Seems like it would be an increase in, in construction expense.
It is an increase in construction expense, there are issues of energy code these days in the split-block kind of. The metal buildings have not figured out exactly.
Okay. Alright. Okay, any comments or questions for our engineering staff or for Ron? Okay. And is there a motion to approve then, staff's recommendation for approval of the amended architectural upgrades for this, for Lot Eight, Twin Arch Business Park, Section Four? Subject to town and county agency comments with the condition that the aforementioned note be deleted from the revised drawing dated ten sixteen fifteen and resubmitted to the town?
I move to approve all of the above.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Alright, motion has been made and seconded to approve the amended architectural upgrades that we have been presented with. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, like sign? Very good. Ron, what's the construction schedule on this project?
He's hoping, buildings going up naturally will be enclosed before winter weather. He's actually hoping to complete through at least base course, his paving and site work before our winter weather sets and I think that's right set per another week. So that he'll have an option, opportunity to block this.
Good, 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 good. Okay, I think everyone here tonight is aware that Carroll County, Carroll County Schools and Board of Education are knee-deep in a very challenging enterprise to basically downsize the, the size of their infrastructure, they're forty-three schools now. They're losing enrollment, and we've come to understand that they've been monitoring that for many, many years. I mean, they've been aware of some decreases in enrollment for the better part of eight to ten years, but for whatever reason have, have held off on doing anything. And now it's to the point where, as you're perhaps aware, the state reimburses and compensates counties for their average daily attendance. So if you're losing enrollment from year to year, you're actually loo, losing a measure of state funding, okay? And with falling enrollments, then utilization efficiency and so forth comes, comes into play. You've got vastly different ages and efficiency of buildings and all of those kinds of things. And so, bottom line, do you close some schools? Do you perhaps shrink your total operating plan, including teachers, so that from a ongoing operating expense standpoint, it's. So that from a ongoing operating expense standpoint, it's simply a smaller footprint. Um, they are grappling with that. In Maryland, there is a set of regulations that are referred, referred to as COMAR um that pertains to virtually all things public school. And as part of the COMAR regulations, there's a set of eight criteria that they pass on to be the basis of what is primarily considered uh in terms of, of creating that potential list for school closures. Um, obvious things are on it in terms of age of building, in terms of operating efficiency, cost of operation, um those kinds of things, the transportation costs, okay? They don't rank order those, they leave that to the discretion of the, the local municipality or, or county. Um, and um one of the things that's been a bit troubling is that some of those criteria seem to have changed um in the process of, of the consideration and the discussion. This process began back early in the year, February or so, I believe, was when uh the superintendent um posed that uh they needed to move forward. And literally, uh there was a Boundary Adjustment Commission that was established to study all of the, the factors and come back with recommendations. Um, now we're into uh possible options that have been proposed. And anyone who's on that list, it first started with one option and then there were two more and now we're up to, to four and about to be five. And as you may have heard, Mount Airy Elementary is on the majority of the potential closer, closed lists, uh rightly or wrongly. Um, there's a lot of emotion involved in it. Um, there's a lot of, of hard work and due diligence that's being put in by a significant number of people in town. Especially the individuals who, who operate and lead the um the Pars Ridge and Mount Airy Elementary PTA, PTO. They are an amazing, impressive group of individuals. And um they've done an awful lot of, of work on this. Have a lot of questions. Um, one of the first things that uh was asked was, well, if there are a set of recommended criteria, um, should there not be a consistent application of those criteria? And there's some discussion that it seems maybe it's not as consistent so far as, as it needs to be. So that's, that's one item. Um, it's my understanding, they haven't done the offset costs. If you close a school, if you're busing children to other schools, there's obviously going to be costs involved in closing down or reusing or retrofitting. In Mount Airy's case, the proposal is that Mount Airy would close as many of those kids as possible would be transferred over to Pars Ridge. Pars was designed and built to be a K through two school. A K through five school is very, very different from the design and construction of the, of the bathrooms to the hallways to, you know, how the, the classrooms are retrofitted to, to all of that. So there, there's a lot involved in that. Um, so we don't know the, the offsets. We really don't know what the net savings might be on an individual, individual school basis or for that matter, any of the options that have thus far been, been proposed. From a pure planning standpoint, there is a significant factor that we became aware of. And until we introduced it, um, the Boundary Adjustment Committee and the Board of Ed had not considered it. And that has to do with our Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, our APFO. We normally think of APFO in Mount Airy with regard to water, sufficient water capability and water resource to do what we need to do. For many, many years, our community was under a consent order from M D E because we literally permitted too much too fast and we got slapped on the wrist. And as a result, we had to basically halt, cease and desist um our further expansion of our developments. We had to do it very, very carefully. We basically had to screw down our permit number per year to the twenty-twenty-four kind of a range. We had to also invest in new wells, we had to come up with additional recharge area. Uh it suppressed the growth rate that we had been enjoying for throughout the nineties and early two thousands. It took us many, many years to come out from that. And therefore, for that period of time, essentially the last eight to ten years, our growth rate, and a lot of people believe perhaps even our enrollment rate has been suppressed because we were responsibly trying to deal with the fact that uh we needed to play catch-up. But besides water resource, there's also street and road capacity and ability to handle additional uh traffic that would be caused by any development. And there is a school capacity factor. Quite simply, if we are, if we lose school capacity, we run the risk of not being able to approve any more development. Not being able to approve Center Street, as an example. Not being able to approve anything that has a residential component to it. And because Center Street and that area and our infill areas are especially designated for our mixed-use um new zoning demarcation, uh which has a residential component to it, that's a concern. Our strategic location in Carroll County makes Mount Airy uniquely qualified for development, managed development of course, but for development. It's, it is a destination that all age groups have, have favored for some time. It's a concern if, for so many reasons, if we lose school capacity, we you, lose yet another school. We lost our first one back in nineteen sixty-seven, right? When we lost our high school. Okay? All right. We're in danger of losing another one. And then packing as many of those kids as possible into a school that wasn't designed to be a K through five. The rest of them would be bussed eight and twelve miles north of here in the opposite direction of the commuting patterns for most of the parents. It's a, it's a significant concern. Um, I would urge you to, if you haven't already done so, the um, the Pars and the Maze, PTA and PTO have a fairly robust um populated Facebook site that has a lot of information and a lot of detail. It's very, very useful in coming up to speed. Carroll County Times has been doing articles on a fairly regular basis, two or three a week. Uh, they're instructive and um we, we need to look at it. It's, it's something that I don't think we were fully aware of until just a few weeks ago. Even though really the groundwork for it is, has been underway for several months. So it's um, it has tremendous implications for us. Especially given our development potential right now. All, all systems are go, we're ready to implement our, our master plan. It's just, it's very well coordinated and very well balanced. But uh we could get stopped in our tracks as a result of all of this. And who's to say what happens later on when the word gets out, well, you don't wanna move there because, you know, they've got school situations and your kids might be bused and you, where you used to be able to use a local daycare, that's no longer the case. Um, property values, gosh, we hope they don't slip, but it's a potential concern. Another analysis that we have done the last couple of weeks, we called out to all of the communities around Carroll County and we asked for their household counts. And we also spoke with uh the Budget Office um in, in Westminster. And we got the tax revenue that every single community contributes. And guess what we found? What we found was that Mount Airy is a major contributor to the tax revenue picture in Carroll County. It's almost one out of every five dollars. It's like eighteen percent, okay? It's a full, it's eight and a half million a year currently. And that's, you know, a few years back, they, they literally tran- trimmed the property tax rate and also the income tax rate in Carroll County, just a bit, just a bit, just a few hundreds of a point. Uh, it's eight and a half million a year right now, just from the portion of the town that's in Carroll County. That's not all the businesses, that's not all the tax revenue, that's not all the households. So we are a full fifty percent of what's, of what Westminster contributes at less than a third of the households. That was the first revelation. The second revelation was on a per-household basis, Mount Airy's tax revenue per year is roughly twice what any other community in the county is. Poised to grow higher, potentially not able to if we lose school capacity. It's a concern.
Well, the numbers that are being thrown around is right now, I think they're saying Pars Ridge and Mount Airy Elementary are about seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent. Um, full, is that, is that correct? If they close Mount Airy Elementary and they move the kids to Pars, and that would mean also bussing the forty kids from Sterling Glen, thirteen miles away, that would put us at about a hundred and eight percent in Pars, a hundred and eight percent of capacity, which means you're over eight percent on, on the capacity that school was built for.
Cause our APFO is one hundred percent.
Our, our Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance says if you're one, at one hundred percent of school pa- capacity, you have no room for any more children. So not only can we not get our Sterling Glen kids into the school that's pretty much right across the street from their houses, but uh all of, all of our Center Street, the rail yard, anything that has a residential contingent will be shutting down. We won't be able to do it by our own Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance.
Unless we tweak it, and quite honestly, we don't wanna do that because the State Department of Education, as well as other state agencies worked with us when we were under the consent agreement to crack these APFO levels. We were at, Councilman and I were at a meeting last week, last Tuesday night, uh a town hall meeting that the Board of Education called. And I made the comment about our concerns about our APFO and, and school capacity uh at a hundred percent. And what I was asked was, why are you only at a hundred percent? The Carroll County requirement is a hundred and twenty percent. You start, you start outfitting the portables, you start cramming kids in closets at ninety-five percent. Incredible question.
Frank Iliana sixty-one oh two, Charlotte, Dan, Sir, come on air. So I'm all for the keep the Manary Elementary School open and hopefully do we win that. But any of you ever think about what happen if the school closes? Did you think about?
We're starting to.
You not even discuss that? What happen if the school closes?
I think there'll be a lot of discussion about that. Right now, the major concern is what can we do, what actions can we take? What, who can we talk to, what strategies can be considered?
I made my living off one door closes, three other opens. So what is gonna happen is they're gonna sell the school, if somebody is gonna buy the school and set up whatever business, mostly people that buy the, they set up senior homes. So as we go forward this process, you guys should start the discussion and maybe have their school donate to the town of Manary. And guess what happens if that happens? You don't have to close the road right here.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
You don't have to spend a lot of money. And I can't even believe you guys spend seventy or a hundred thousand dollar on a study. They could very easily reach out to the business in Manary, we could give you all the answer you just got a month ago. I mean, you guys need stop to waste the ton of money during the study when anybody could answer the question, what they trying to do up here, the old iron building. So while we fighting the school to keep open, somebody else should start to ask the question, what happens? What happens is they're gonna sell the school. And they will sell the school, but you should start asking about, hey, if you do close the school, then donate to the school to Manary. And you guys can do community center, whatever other thing you wanna do.
The thought has, has surfaced.
Yes, and just to reiterate what you said, uh Leslie did say tonight she couldn't attend the meeting. But Leslie did say that if they were to close the school, that we should get something for it. And she did s- suggest that, that they donate the land of the school to Mount Airy. So that's a very good suggestion. Yes, exactly. So that should be the push. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Well, I, I, I think that we're trying to have a, a concerted force here that says we're not gonna accept closing Mount Airy Elementary. Okay.
Unfortunately, if the school makes this decision, you know, I see this all the time. I can tell you that I was involved in a deal, what we do by the school.
Right.
And we turn this season, and everybody wanna complain, but they have their final say. While you guys try to do whatever, okay, boom, 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 everybody's trying to do that. Somebody should start thinking about it, what happens if the school closes?
Oh, we've, we've thought about it and we've talked about it amongst ourselves. But I think for the, for the people in Mount Airy, that, you know, our, our first and best effort goes at keeping the school open, number one. Um, we have, we have some people on the council that are, they, they have relationships with some of the school board members. And so they're trying to talk to the school board members. We have, we have other people on the council that have relationships with the Board of County Commissioners in Carroll County. And they're trying to work through that way. We have others of us that, that um have some relationships with people at the state level. So for right now, we're saying you can't close the school. Especially for what it does to our Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance and, and what it does to the, we spent five years bringing everybody on board with, with the new master plan. And I think we, we did a real good job of doing that. Mr. Butts did a real good job of doing that, of bringing everybody together for this. Um, and this will, this will, even if we get that building, it's gonna shut down any development in this town for a long time.
What I'm saying is, if they decide to close the school, somebody should be talking to them but donating the school, the whole building to Manary.
And that we've.
And I will offer my service to go negotiate with them for free. And I, and I will work very hard to make sure they, if that's happens. And we all hope it doesn't happen.
Right.
But you wanna make sure if it does happen, or somebody else comes out of town, it buys the school, it, it makes a lot of money, it creates a traffic which you're not gonna get nothing in return.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
I understand.
You gotta work on both sides.
Yep, good point.
Because before you guys said nobody ever has this discussion, now you're saying you guys do have the discussion. So whatever you had, I will offer my service for free to go talk to the school board. And next time you guys pay somebody to do a study, I wish somebody will let me know, because I could done the study for free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments about Mount Airy Elementary? Come on up. Rick, we're trying to do a better job getting them to the, to the podium.
So I think the Carroll County Times hit it with their headline last week about if, 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 if it remains open, if they don't close schools, you're gonna see a thirty percent tax increase over five years, was headlined. And, you know, follow the money. That's what it's, that's what it's gonna amount to. Either you wanna shell out thirty percent more in property taxes.
No.
That's what they're saying, if, if we, if.
That's what they're saying, but what about, what about an economic development vision? What about a revenue growth vision in concert with cost management?
They're giving you the facts that they see right now and they need to implement something.
Because they haven't done the other.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not voicing for closing the school. I'm just saying. I'm just saying, you gotta pay for it. You do have to give these people credit for putting the numbers together for what's actually happening. Not a, not a vision that you might have off in the future. These guys want hard numbers now. So I, I, I just think that hit it right on the head. It, it's gonna cost thirty percent over five years. Where's it gonna come from? And, and that's a question you really need to answer because those are the hard numbers, the reality of today, not a vision of the future or an economic plan that you're thinking of, that's not in place right now. And any of these visions are predicated on it happening. And this economy is a very uncertain economy right now. So I, I just think that was a, a very poignant article that you need to follow the money. Cause that's what it, it all comes down to, money.
Uh, Michael Berman, four twelve Wildwood Avenue. I, I would just like to make a comment in regard to the APF on schools as it relates to the, some of the issues that I've fought with on the APF for water. And, you know, the idea that, uh, the, the APF on schools would be if it was at a hundred percent, um, to not allow any new residential growth. It, um, it seems to me, if you look at a lot of other APFs, their tolerance might be at a hundred ten, a hundred and fifteen to allow time for transition so that you don't get this situation where uh, you turn the spigot off to development for ten years and then no one moves the Mount Airy and then your population shrinks. So, uh, just a, a comment that on the APF, possibly if, if it's not so stringent, it may not have this on and off spigot.
Good point, good point. And if indeed we have to proceed with, with closing that, that should be part of our argument.
Thought I was gonna get through this without saying anything, Rick Latchford in Nottingham. And I admittedly have a very limited view on the school closing, not having any children in the school system and haven't for quite a while, not since a long time ago in Montgomery County. But I tend to, as you probably are aware, look at things from a kind of a harder perspective. And I was thinking about this today as I was reading about it online. And for those of you who will be dealing with the county or talking to the county, I have some questions and they may be pertinent, they may not. It's up to you to decide because I'm certainly not going to go to them with it. But in the ten years I've lived in Mount Airy, I've watched them build Pars Ridge less than ten years old, right? I seem to have it in my mind, it was under construction when I moved here.
Yeah, about ten years.
Actually, what brought this to mind was a friend was talking today about a high school student that was walking by her home and wondered what the sign saved the school was all about. She told him. And the response of this high school student was, they just tore down a school and built a new one. Why wasn't this in the plan? Why did they build a new one if they don't need schools here? Bottom line for me, where I'm thinking, what I was thinking today was, somebody should ask the county in Mount Airy, at, at, the new, or the old element, what the school they're gonna tear down. They just put a new roof on that one.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Who's the planning?
One point eight million dollars for that.
Department for the school system has a lousy reputation of making good plans. Challenge them. And point out that their record sucks pretty good now. I'm done.
Yep, yep.
In keeping with that thought, this is the same county. I live in Frederick County, but I can remember when they were building Winter's Mill. And they figured out that they put the high school in the wrong place because it's so close to Westminster High School. But they had already constructed it, so there was no, no way to change it because Mount Airy was trying to get a high school here, but they said, well, we, we can't do that. But when they figured out, they really put the high school in the wrong place. That's millions of dollars, so.
We'll take a couple more and then we'll, we'll move on.
So people may want to be start licking their chops at the, at the possibility of a new building for Mount Airy to do whatever they want to do. And, um, has anyone given the thought of the maintenance cost? That's a large building, considering how tight our budget is in this town. Where are those resources gonna come from? If we even got it for free?
The maintenance budget is little over a hundred thousand dollars. The fully loaded operating cost with core staff and custodians and so forth is about a million, it's about one point one a year.
So now, have you broken that down to what it would cost for bare bones, for us to keep that running?
Not yet, not yet.
That, that's a huge consideration.
Yep, could be.
Okay.
Their school is so big. If they give it back to the town of Mount Airy, with my free service, we will make money. That sounds like Donald Trump, right?
I was gonna say.
You lease one or two floor, there may be more than money to, to pay for all the costs and leave enough room for the community. If they goes their route. We hope they're gonna keep open. But if they do close there and the town of Mount Airy loses there, like you lost the, the place on North Main Street where I was trying to get it for one hundred fifty thousand, you guys should jump all over. You, it's ridiculous. You rent some of the space to office, whatever, and keep whatever you need and you're gonna make money, guaranteed.
Yep. Okay. Let's move on then to unfinished business. And without Heather here, bless you to someone, Andrea. Uh, ordinance two thousand fifteen twelve. This was the, the omnibus ordinance that cleaned up and pulled together, um, pieces of the code with regard to, uh, to water resource. Anybody have any commentary?
Just, just if that's going to town council next week.
Right, yeah, that's.
Yep.
Public, public hearing on, uh,
Monday.
Yeah, November the second, I believe it is, public hearing at, they start at seven o'clock. There's two of them. There's two thousand fifteen dash twelve and two thousand fifteen dash nine, which I believe is the firearms, tobacco and alcohol.
Eighteen or nineteen?
Huh?
Eighteen or nineteen is the firearm.
Eighteen is alcohol, firearms and tobacco.
Right.
Medical marijuana's already been stripped out of it. It's gonna be separate.
What's?
Nineteen is changes in the downtown zone to permit micro distilleries, breweries, wineries, coffee roasting operations.
What is nine? Two thousand fifteen dash nine.
I don't know what nine is.
Nine and twelve.
Don't know that. Uh, twelve, well, we know what twelve is.
Water allocation.
I don't know what nine is.
Okay. Thanks for coming, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
So what are you, are you reading from the agenda?
What?
Yeah. No.
There's only one that's listed here.
No, there, we only have one on the, on the agenda for tonight and that's the one that we started. Well, we've been working on it for two or three meetings now. Um, and we preliminarily sent it on to council, realizing there might be some final, some final edits still to come in. And I think that's what this is.
Nineteen, eighteen and twelve.
Pieces of that.
I'm, I'm.
The only other thing is, uh, Tom did update, uh, two thousand fifteen dash twelve.
Okay.
Some of Leslie's, uh, comments.
Okay, that's right.
So those are.
That's right.
And the public hearings are for two thousand fifteen dash eighteen, dash nineteen and dash twelve. There's three of them.
Right, right. Okay. Okay. Office Park Employment Campus. Status, final draft and discussion. I know the town attorney has been having a discussion with the county attorney. But I don't know that they have reached consensus on all parts of it. I know it's underway.
I did talk with Tom today.
Okay.
Uh, they're meeting with the IDA, the town's meeting with the IDA on Wednesday to go over about four discussion points that they're, they're still, um, working out, so.
Okay.
That's all the update I have.
All right. So we're getting closer at least. Getting closer, okay. Um, Barney, how about, you have an update on the Highway twenty-seven corridor study?
Highway twenty-seven, uh, nothing's changed since the last meeting. Uh, we're still working on the website and, um, um, setting up a meeting, um, but that's, we were a little slow on that subject for the last few weeks.
What? Where is Sabra weighing in what, uh, what they're doing in the project? Are they past the original data collection?
I think basically, yeah, that's what they have on the website and, uh, they're basically waiting for us to approve that basically, um, for, you know, for staff to give the blessing to make that public.
Okay. All right, um, we've got the sign ordinance work session on here, but obviously in terms of the pecking order, it's, it's behind the, um, the new zoning districts and the corridor study. So I suspect it's going to be toward the end of the year, early part of the year before we can get a clear enough agenda to set the work session for that. But once we get into it and, uh, I think it'll, it'll, it'll flow fairly nicely. And the sign key will help a lot, okay.
I'm sorry, did I miss the update on APFO?
The next day?
Can you say that?
Oh. I may have, I may have, yep.
We were trying to skip by that and you just.
Didn't mean to. We, we, uh, we don't have our, our subcommittee chair, she's, uh, getting a brief together for, for tomorrow. But, um, I think most of the members of the committee have submitted their recommendations and their feedback on the draft of the ordinance. Um, if they just, it all came in at the last minute. So Heather needs some extra time to literally blend all that together. And so we're, we're gonna have to defer.
I think, I think at, at last, the last meeting, she hopes to have that to the council by the first, no later than the first of the year.
It'll be right about then.
Yeah, so, you know, that leaves November, December.
Yep, yep. Okay. Uh, section eight, reports and other business. Council liaison report?
Um, we've already discussed most of what we, we've been through, but, um, Ken Phibas and I, Ken has been attending the Frederick County chapter of the Maryland Municipal League with us. Um, had an opportunity to sit down and talk to the governors liaison to the municipalities at the last meeting. We got, um, we finalized the tax equity program in, in Frederick County. And the way, the way it is, it, it's gonna have to be voted on every year. But we as MML, as MML members and representatives from the communities have a whole lot to say about what goes into the tax equity program now. Um, and so that was approved. We'll get just about the same amount of money that we've been getting somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And this is money that the county is required to give back to you for programs that are offered that, that you're taxed at the county level for and at the municipality for. Um, I think the three things that we have are the planning commission, the police and our parks. Um, it's a very, it's, I've, I've sat through about twenty hours of meetings and I completely do not understand the process, but it works. I like, well, I have a whole stack of papers here explaining to me how it works. But it's just, it's, it's very, it's very difficult to understand. Um, and I, I think Carroll County does the same thing. But then most of them, a, a good portion of the money that they give us back on the Carroll County side goes right into the fire company. Um, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what Carroll County does, but things will be the same in Frederick County. Um, it's just now that we will approve it every year instead of it just being handed down from the Board of County Commissioners. Now the county council is going to offer us something that we will have to approve. And the legislative agenda for the next, for the next year is basically the same as it's been. Try to get the highway user revenues back to thirty percent. Um, where I think at our, at our worst, we were what, about five percent a few years ago? Um, it's a substantial amount of money and all of it is what we've used in programs over the last ten years in Mount Airy to, to repave our roads. But even when we weren't getting that amount of money from the state, we still kept our program where we, we kept up with our road maintenance schedule. And there's one other thing, oh, um, project open space grants. There's, there's been some discussion about moving those back into the general fund and MML is very against that. So those, those are the two issues they're gonna be fighting for us this year. And one of them is POS grants and the other one is, um, what did I just say? POS grants and highway user revenues. And that is my report.
Cool, cool. Okay. Uh, we've already mentioned that more than likely because end of the year pressures and priorities, uh, on all of our, our professional planners, our, our joint town and county, and county planning commission dialogues and meetings probably will, won't be able to, to get on, go away until first of the year. Uh, our next planning commission meeting date is Monday, November twenty-third? Okay?
It's a week early.
And Patty, you're already saying you're not gonna be able to be there.
It doesn't look like.
Doesn't look, okay. We need to tell all of our folks who weren't here tonight that they, they've used up their abs. Okay. Anybody have anything else? Barney, Rachel? Lisa? Okay. Anyone out in the audience have anything else? Okay. Then seeing no other need for further business, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thanks for coming, folks.
Thank you. Yeah, that changes.